...of September 26, 2016. It's approximately 7:30 PM. Can I please have a roll call?
Mayor Prottembliss.
I'm here.
Councilman Clark.
Present.
Councilman Corbett.
Here.
Councilman Geddings.
Here.
Councilwoman Scott.
Here.
Councilman Soltis.
Here.
Mayor Howard.
I'm here. Would you please rise for an invocation led by Councilman Robert Corbett and remain standing if you're able for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Infinite wisdom, we thank you for having given us the opportunity to meet together here today and we ask most humbly for a blessing of our gathering, brighten our eyes with greater understanding, enrich our hearts with compassion and courage, and again receive our gratitude for this opportunity of fellowship. Amen.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, veritable, just as for all.
Thanks. Please be seated. Approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions? Hearing none. We have one presentation tonight, the Distinguished Budget Award from the Government Finance Officers Association. Ms. Marsh?
So Mayor Hartwell's request, City Council is scheduled to present the Deputy City Manager with the Government Finance Officers Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for Fiscal Year 2017.
Thank you. Melissa? I believe we have the award in back, but I'll just shake your hand and thank you. Thank you very much. We'll continue on. City Council, we have six business license applicants tonight, items A1 through 6. What's the wish of City Council?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Clark.
I'd make a motion to approve business license initial. Number one, my Vieta LLC and Immigration, excuse me, and Services Office at 30569 Dequindre Road, and that is a new business. Number two, Family Heating and Cooling Incorporated, a heating and cooling business at 28050 John R. Road. That is a new location. Number three, Class A Training Center, DVA, Tap Testing and Prevention, a drug and alcohol testing facility at 26747 John R. Road, and that is a new business. Number four, Class A Collision and Auto Body Repair Shop at 1409 East Ten Mile Road. That is a new business. Number five, G Auto and Equipment, an auto wholesaler and finance business at 28091 Dequindre Road, Suite 106. That is a new business. Number six, JoJo's Hair Salon, a hair salon at 31101 Edward. That is a new business. Number six, subject, number six, to operate JoJo's Hair Salon. Okay, I'm sorry, I already read that one. And it's subject to compliance with all departmental and ordinance requirements.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corbett, support? Thank you. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Soltis?
Quick question. Would staff know the first one, if it's pronounced correctly, my Vieta? What kind of immigration services do they provide? Do we know?
If you give, Mr. Mayor, if you give me a second.
Please.
I have to just pull it up on my computer.
I'm just curious, the owner, according to documentation, lives in Texas.
Just says Immigration Office and Services.
Yeah, and the application doesn't give specifics of the services, it just says Immigration Office and Services. So we do require, though, that they have a local person as the manager, even though they are located, the owner's located in Texas. So we do have somebody that's from Commerce Township listed as the manager.
Okay. Mr. Soltis, to require his state license, the LLC license, they have to file paperwork with the state of Michigan that says they were, they're operating under a lawful purpose under the LLC Act. I mean, that's not that specific, but at least they got a little bit of state coverage on providing some authorized service.
Okay. Just curious.
Any other comments from City Council? All right, we've got a motion made by Councilman Clark, seconded by Councilman Corbett, to approve business licenses initial A1, A2, A3, A4, A5, and 6, subject to all, subject to compliance with all departmental and ordinance requirements. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. They all carry. We do not have business licenses, temporary, seasonal, or non-commercial. Likewise, no public hearings. Are there reports on the agenda of interest to parties in the audience? If not, we'll go meeting open to the public. If you'd like to address City Council, come to the podium now. It's your option, but it'd be helpful if you give your name and address. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less.
Okay. My name's Gloria Moore. I live at 27368 Dartmouth. Friends of the Madison Heights Area Senior Citizens is going to have another third Tuesday public meeting in October, October 18th at 7:00 PM. Snacks and beverages will be provided. Everyone is welcome. Also, friends, also, the Cambridge East Nursing Home is asking for volunteers and, you know, they, we'll, we are more than willing to forward any information that, if you want to volunteer. We are also going to be doing the Christmas gathering of items to give them Christmas presents again this year. So that'll be, that, that information's going to be coming up. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address City Council? Okay. We'll continue. Item C, Communications, there are none. Same with item D, Reports, nothing for tonight. Item E, nothing for tonight. Which brings us to item F, Bid Awards and Purchases. We have two. F1 is from the DPS Director regarding library waterproofing. Ms. Marsh?
As part of the fiscal year 2016 budget, the Library Foundation Waterproofing Project was successfully bid with Phase 1 being awarded by City Council to the sole responsive builder, build bidder, Arisco Contracting Group. The work consisted of exterior waterproofing on the south and west of the building's foundation, replacement of the collapsed drain tile, and all-related restoration work. Staff was very pleased with the quality of work and the finished product provided by Arisco. Due to various renovations at the library, an accessible exterior area for Phase 2 is significantly limited to the area under the youth section windows. Staff and the city's energy consultant agree that performing this work would result in a very limited portion of the north wall being waterproofed. Due to this limitation, they also agreed funding would be better spent on a Phase 2 alternate work proposal, which includes complete interior waterproofing of the tunnel and restoration of the planting box that was demolished during Phase 1 work. This work would result in 100% waterproofing coverage in the remaining tunnel, as well as providing an additional barrier in the areas which have already been waterproofed from the exterior. Staff, the energy, the city's energy consultant, and I recommend that Phase 2 library waterproofing work be awarded to the previous and sole qualified bidder, Arisco Contracting Group, for two alternative work proposals only. The interior side of cementous waterproofing of all accessible areas of the tunnel and replacement of the west entrance planter box removed during Phase 1 waterproofing work in the total amount of $37,495. Arisco has provided a contract price guarantee to hold their prices as stated in the original proposal. Funds are budgeted and available in fiscal year 2017 adopted budget.
Thank you. What's the wish of City Council?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corbett?
Sir, I move that the council concur with the recommendation of the DPS Director and grant the Phase 2 library waterproofing work to Arisco Contracting Group in total amount of $37,495.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Scott?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? The motion is made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilwoman Scott, to concur with the recommendation of the DPS Director, which would award the contract to Arisco for a contract price in a total amount of $37,495. Is there any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next, item F2, a bid award purchase from the DPS Director regarding replacement of the sewer Vector. Ms. Marsh?
The adopted fiscal year 2017 budget includes the scheduled replacement of a 2003 sewer Vector funded through the Water and Sewer Division. This frontline unit is at 13 years of age and is in extremely poor condition. This machine is essential both for routine sewer cleaning and maintenance, as well as emergency sewer backup calls. It is staff's intent to sell the current backup, which is 18 years old and also in poor shape. As a staff committee of DPS supervisors and equipment operators conducted a thorough review of the three best-known regional brands of sewer cleaners, Vector, GapVax, and Vacall, including scrutinizing each of the machines and conducting extensive hands-on field testing. It was the unanimous consensus of all involved that the GapVax model was the best of the three machines in all areas. Motor Pool Supervisor Terry McGrann and Street and Facility Supervisor Cory Almas performed reference checks with multiple communities and organizations using GapVax machines. Information was gleaned from administrative, mechanical, and operations staff regarding operability, reliability, maintenance, customer service, and necessary technical and warranty support. In all instances, the GapVax brand was unconditionally recommended. Further, despite the GapVax distributor being located in northern, north-central Ohio, they have mobile service trucks covering the state of Michigan, and we were assured by multiple references that the GapVax mobile service is prompt and competent. Motor Pool Supervisor Terry McGrann also analyzed the pricing pages provided by each distributor and found that among the base models with the same options, the GapVax was the least expensive of the three. Staff and I recommend that council approve the purchase of one GapVax combination sewer cleaning truck from M-Tech through the Oakland County Cooperative Purchasing Contract under bid number 004011 for a total equipment cost of $4,9,501. Funds are budgeted and available for the scheduled replacement.
Thank you. What's the wish of City Council?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Scott?
I move for council to approve the purchase of one GapVax combination sewer cleaning truck from M-Tech through the Oakland County Cooperative Purchasing Contract under bid number 004011 for a total equipped cost of $4,900, $4,9501.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corbett?
Support?
Thanks. Let's see, there's a motion made by Councilwoman Scott, seconded by Councilman Corbett, to approve the purchase of one GapVax combo sewer cleaning truck from M-Tech through the Oakland County Cooperative Purchasing Contract under bid number 004011 for a total equipped cost of $409,000, $409,501. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor.
Mr. Bliss?
Since this is such a sizable amount, I'd love it if our DPS Director, Mr. Vitale, could come up and discuss the need and what we're going to be getting out of this new machine.
Thank you. Mr. Vitale, if you will.
Good evening, Your Honor and Council. In terms of need, we looked at our two current vehicles. One is a 2003 and one is a 1998. I did bring some numbers for council just to chew on tonight. In terms of our sanitary sewer network, we've got over 110 miles of sanitary sewer in this city. We also have about 55 miles of storm sewer, and we've got over 2,500 catch basins in this city. The need would be to maintain that distribution network. Also, in terms of my staff getting a call, whether it be at 2:30 in the afternoon or 2:30 in the morning when somebody's basement could potentially be backing up, this will be the machine that toes the line and goes out there and takes care of this. So in terms of need, I would prioritize this as the single most important piece of equipment that DPS owns and uses out in, out in the fleet, so.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Just for clarification's sake, I know it was mentioned in the write-up, but for those at home watching and in the audience, could you elaborate on what this vehicle will enable us to do that the older models that we're retiring weren't able to?
The principle is still the same in terms of what the vehicle does. This is equipped with a vacuum that will suck out catch basins when needed, and the most important piece of this equipment is the rotor or the piece that goes into the sewers. So in terms of operation, not much has changed, but if you, if you looked at the equipment sheets that you see in there, our two existing pieces of equipment, the, the maintenance on both of these pieces of equipment are continuing to rise. We are noticing downtime on these pieces of equipment, and you get into a slippery slope with such a specialized piece of equipment. It's time to replace it. So to answer your question, not much has changed in terms of what we'll be using this equipment for, but reliability will be the key with the replacement.
Thank you. Any other comments from council? See, okay, I'll repeat the motion made by Councilwoman Scott, seconded by Councilman Corbett, to approve the purchase of this truck for a cost of $4,9,501. Any more discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Can I please have a motion to adopt the minutes from the special meeting of September 12, 2016?
Your Honor?
Mr. Bliss?
So moved.
As printed?
As printed.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Geddings?
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion on adopting the minutes as printed from the special meeting of 9/12/16? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Can I please have a motion to adopt the minutes as printed from the regular meeting of 9/12/16?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corbett?
I would offer two corrections to the minutes. I don't have it in front of me, but I believe it's motion 16-235 and 236. I'm recorded as a yes vote. In fact, I was absent at that point of the meeting. Those were the closing two resolutions, sir. Other than that, as amended, I would move to approve.
Is there a second? Is there support for the motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Scott?
Second.
Okay, the motion was made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilwoman Scott, to adopt the minutes with the corrections stated by Mr. Corbett. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Are there any nominations to boards and commissions from City Council members tonight?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Well, it depends. If you would like to nominate Ms. Brunkie for the Election Commission.
I'll nominate Angela Brunkie to the Elected Officials Compensation Commission.
Then I would be pleased to move to confirm the nomination of Ms. Brunkie to a term, well, it's a seven-year term, so it would be 23, right? 10, 1, 23.
Thank you. Is there support for the nomination?
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Scott?
Support.
Any discussion on this nomination? Okay, let's see. All in favor of appointing Angela Brunkie to a seven-year term expiring in 2023 to the Elected Officials Compensation Commission signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Are there any other nominations tonight? Oh, there's a, an applicant to the Multicultural Board. That's the only other applicant I see. No other nominations tonight?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corbett?
I would move to reappoint Chelsea, and I don't want to goof up the name.
Zuzinlak.
What she said. To a, another two-year term on the Multicultural Commission, to a term expiring 8/24/18.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Geddings?
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Corbett, supported by Councilman Geddings, to reappoint Chelsea Zuzinlak to the Multicultural Relations Advisory Board for a two-year term to expire in 2018. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Any other nominations? I don't see any listed. All right, so we'll move on. Executive session, we do not have any planned tonight. So before I adjourn the meeting, I invite any closing comments by council members, and I'll, let's begin. Councilman Corbett?
Just one topic and a couple of points. With respect to I-75, I wanted to recognize, at least at this level, the ongoing efforts of Senator Gregory, who I know has been working in Lansing to try and work with the Governor's Office and others to fashion a bill that might allow compensation to local communities. Remember, we've talked here a number of times about several million dollars that Madison Heights will have to pay out for the honor of having I-75 run through our town and the repairs that'll be attendant to it. And if you recall, we had passed the bill, we had, the state had passed the bill, and the governor vetoed it, which compensated the local municipalities. I know the senator has been working. I don't know how it's going to end up. One never knows on these things, but I just wanted to publicly acknowledge and thank him for his work on that. MDOT has floated, as far as I know, it's still floated, a proposed change to the design of I-75, which would change the 11-mile exit, which would back it up. People would exit at Lincoln instead of at 11-mile, believing it would allow for an easier flow off of that exit onto 11-mile and onwards on the surface drive. I would hope that they would think about that. I'm not sure that just a little better designed exit signed at 11-mile might accomplish that. You have, I think a lot of the congestion at 11-mile is everybody's trying to jam over to make a left turn on 11-mile, and it isn't clearly defined that you've got two lanes for making a left turn to go towards Royal Oak. I'm not sure that just that simple act alone could help to cure it. Now, I recognize, I'm no road engineer, I'm no engineer of any kind, and with the potentially increased traffic volumes that we're going to have, I'm not sure what the impact will be. I'm just not, I'm just not comfortable having that dropped in our lap along with many other things with the redesign of that exit. So, and I'm concerned what that would mean, not only for traffic, but of course for our, our businesses and the immediate, immediately adjacent to that intersection, so. That's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bliss?
Yes, Your Honor. Just really quick, I wanted to let everybody out there who might be watching know, with all the discussion that we've had recently on, on code enforcement, I've asked the city manager to look into a revised staff policy on how we can escalate code enforcement. Now, keep in mind that 95% of the time, code enforcement works perfectly. It works as planned, and our code enforcement officers do a great job. But what we do not have is a formal process to deal with the 5% of cases that are really challenging. You know, in those cases, we have repeat offenders, oftentimes for the same offenses, and defining a process to which we have escalation, not just in penalties, but in the amount of times and frequency that we stop by residences like that, that are constantly in non-compliance. Just formalizing up that process, I think, would take a lot of the guesswork out of it. You would also be able to factor in the frequency and the amount of times that a residency has been ticketed for non-compliance or has been issued warnings, and factor that in as you can scale. And so we can assign our resources and allocate those resources accordingly, so we can spend more time on the homes that need it, and for those that just need a simple reminder or maybe need us to connect them with one of our community service groups because maybe they are having difficulty at that particular time. We can take care of those on the same basis that we would normally be, but escalate at the point to which that house becomes a nuisance to those neighboring homes around them. And so I, I'm really encouraged to see what staff is able to come up with. A lot, I mean, the laws are in place, we shouldn't have to change any of our ordinances, we shouldn't have to do anything really even at this table, but a change in staff policy as far as the frequency and how we handle and how we escalate those cases that have reached that threshold, I think would really help us to not just engage the community, but take care of some of those recurring problems that are existing in our neighborhoods today. So just to bring everybody up to speed, if, if you do, and this is just a quick reminder, but if there is, if there is a home on your street that absolutely would warrant a code enforcement visit, please make sure to call us. We cannot fix what we do not know. So please make sure to call us, and then as we can review some of the cases and the data, that's going to enable us to make decisions moving forward. That's it, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mr. Geddings?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sherman?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Mrs. Marsh?
Nothing tonight. Thanks.
Mrs. Prince?
Thank you. Just wanted to remind you that the deadline to register to vote for the presidential election is October 11th. Anyone interested in registering can come to the city clerk's office, or they can go to any secretary of state's office to register as well. And I also wanted to note that if anybody is interested in getting an absentee ballot, they should contact our office. You can come in and get a application, you can call us, and we can mail you one, and then we can mail you a ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clark?
No time.
Thank you. Mrs. Scott?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have three items. First one, I wanted to let you know about an event that's coming up Wednesday, and that is this Wednesday, September 28th, from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. The Madison Heights Intermediates Club is sponsoring an Honor Flight Michigan fundraiser. So any, any combat veteran who has been served in the war, at any war, can be sent on these flights once we raise enough money for them to go. I think most of the people from World War II have already had the opportunity to do that, but now we're working on people that were in the Korean War. It is from 6:00 to 9:00, and it will be held at Wingstop Restaurant, which is on John R., I'm sorry, on Dequindre, south of 11-mile, kind of like halfway between 11 and 12, at Wingstop. So it'll, actually, it's in Warren. But the nice thing is about, the manager is donating 50% of his profits that night towards these funds, so that we can send some of our veterans to Washington, and I think it's a great tribute to them. Number two is this Sunday, or, I'm sorry, a week from Sunday, is the Nature Center Open House. So that's October 2nd, and it's from 12:00 to 4:00 PM at the Nature Center. There's no cost. In fact, I think you'll probably be treated to apples and other little goodies, donuts and things like that, but in order to appreciate your nature center, you really need to see what they're doing there. So that's between 12:00 and 4:00 on Sunday, October 2nd. And the last one I want to talk about is that Meet the Candidates will be held. I know every community likes to have Meet the Candidates, and of course, I don't think the president's candidates will be there. You can watch them tonight instead, but anybody else who's running for office in our local area will be able to make a presentation, and you'll get to hear them speak about what their viewpoints are. And that date is Wednesday, October 19th. It will be from 11:30 to 1:30, and it will be at the Lampir Board Offices, Administration Building, which is on Dorchester. And I will have this put on the website so you can see it. If you want to have lunch, it's an $8 fee, but if you don't want to have lunch, then it's, it's no cost. But you're able to hear all kinds of candidates around the area, so we're hoping a lot of them will show up, and probably by then, we'll be able to list the ones that are going to be there. So if you want to hear anybody, I know you don't always have an opportunity to hear the ones that are running for Congress, et cetera, and things like that, and for the state. So this is a good opportunity to hear what their viewpoints are. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Soltis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate Brooks Patterson in the paper talking about suing the federal government to pause on how and who and how many refugees come into the state. I think he brings up a pretty good point. If you look at some of the refugees that are coming in, according to the U.S. State Department, they're labeled from state sponsors of terrorism, Iran, Sudan, Syria. To me, that's what makes the difference, this type of refugee settlement, a different issue altogether. My problem is that the city council, and therefore the community, don't have a say in it at all. We don't know who, rarely don't know how many refugees until after the fact. Nothing at all. That bothers me. It's like they drop them off and say, here, you deal with it. I don't necessarily agree with that lack of planning. I read that State Representative Jim Runstead introduced legislation to make refugee placement in Michigan both safe and more transparent, while also giving local government a voice in the House, excuse me, a voice in the process. Those are House bills, if you want to look at it, 5528, 5529. According to the representative, Michigan receives more refugees per capita than other -- any other state in the nation. But as I agree, it lacks a framework for defining how many refugees and families our state is capable of serving. There currently is no system involving state and local governments for oversight of refugees entering the state. This is not only a security risk to our state, but is a wide open for human trafficking abuses, according to the state rep. So it's just something to think about. I also went to the funeral for the Detroit Police Officer who was killed in the line of duty. It was very sad. There was a lot of people there. He left a wife and two younger children. And our prayers go out to him and his family. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Clark?
I'd like to say something along the lines of, Mr. Soltis, the president is going to allot $5.6 million to bring the refugees here. But a few of us went to a funeral the other night, and a young man was in Kosovo, and I don't know for sure that it was military-related, but all of our soldiers coming back, it don't seem to have enough money to help them. But he can allot $5.6 billion to bring refugees into our country. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank you. Very interesting comments. You know, Madison Heights has always been a very welcoming community from our, you know, founding fathers from Tennessee and Kentucky, who built this city, you know, to, over the years, Polish and Irish and German and Canadian immigrants. And it's remarkable to see the diversity we have in the city, you know, with our Vietnamese population, who have become business owners and stakeholders in this community, and a very strong Chaldean community from Iraq, who, you know, in many cases were war refugees themselves, where it was either take a bullet to the brain or flee your country, and they chose Madison Heights. And so I appreciate your comments, and I appreciate the hard work of our multicultural board. Is there any further business before the City Council? Hearing none, the meeting's adjourned. Good evening.